Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon, I would like to welcome you to the September 29th, 2014 meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceeding with the invocation offered by Reverend Jim Barlow. Reverend Barlow has served as the pastor of South Street Ministries since the summer of 2011. The South Street Ministry partners with several agencies in Central Florida such as the Workforce Advantage Academy, Justice for Our Neighbor, the Orlando Housing Authority, and Reeves Terrace to achieve its ministry of God's transformation through community partnerships. The ministry has created a mentoring program for children that focuses on literacy, arithmetic achievement, and has hosted bike giveaways and back-to-school block parties and distributudes and blankets through its annual Blanket Reeves Terrace with Love campaign. The invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance offered today by or led today by District One Commissioner Jim Gray. We could all please stand.
Thank you Mayor Dyer, it's an honor to be here with all of you today. Let's pray. Loving and gracious God, we give you thanks and praise for the abundant blessings you've poured out upon our hearts this day. Accept our gratitude as we seek to honor our fellow community in leading and inspiring others to view challenges as opportunities, change as potential, and ultimately to see hope and promise on the horizon of a new tomorrow. We remember those who have gone before us paving the way for the opportunities that we embrace today. We remember the lost, the hungry, and the sick in our city, our country, and the world. We hold close those whom society has chosen to exclude or oppress. Grant that all who are gathered here today may be mindful of their responsibility to the people of this city and that they may find strength in you as you provide joyous celebrations today, areas of need requiring attention and clarity within all decisions that will be made. May all of us gathered here today continue to be challenged to give our best, to find grace where mistakes have been made, and with confidence make decisions that will lead all of us towards the potential found in tomorrow. And for this and for your many blessings, we give you, loving and gracious God, all the joy, all the thanks, and all the praise. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, and to the Father, who is with us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Pastor, I think this may be the most well-attended invocation we've ever had here at City Hall. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of a quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor Yovacoram?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, I'm not going to forget to do the minutes today, so why don't we take up for consideration the meeting minutes of the 501 budget hearing on September 15th, the Agenda Review and City Council Meeting. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Sheehan. All in favor of the motion indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, and so the motion carries. That brings us right into awards presentations and recognitions. Marcia, you are first up related to the Jefferson Award Lead 360 Challenge.
Thank you Mayor Dyer and City Commissioners, good afternoon. It's such a pleasure to be with you again and especially for this purpose. The Lead 360 Challenge engages America's youth ages five to 25 to elevate their local service projects onto a national platform empowering and educating the youth by their ability to affect meaningful change individually, collectively, nationally, and locally. Last year, Mayor Dyer, because of his commitment to citizen volunteerism and service, introduced our youth in Orlando to the Lead 360 Challenge. This introduction came via Michelle Faidance, who is the National Director for Lead 360, who has worked with me and our team to recognize some of our most outstanding youths for their volunteer service and for the things that they are doing to improve our community. Many of those youth are here today along with their sponsors and our partners at Orange County Public Schools and Florida Blue, and I'd like to introduce Michelle Faidance, who will bring them up for presentations. Michelle?
Thank you, Marcia. The Lead 360 Challenge was launched nationally by the Jefferson Awards and Partners in September 2010. The focus of this program is to recognize outstanding youth service projects, projects that students are passionate about, that they want to do to help make our world and communities a better place. Participants share their stories of service, could get templates for various projects, and learn from other youth working on similar issues. They entered their projects as individuals, teams, or entire schools. We wish to thank Mayor Dyer and City Council, the Office of Community Affairs and Human Relations for all their support of the program this past year. We also wish to thank Orange County Public Schools for their support of the challenge, and I think joining us today from OCPS, if they would please stand, are Scott Fritz, Chief Academic Officer, Misty Cruz, Senior Administrator for Guidance Services, and Mary Bridges, Senior Director for Guidance Services. Also joining us today is the Vice President of the Blue Cross Blue Shield Foundation of Florida and a very good friend of the Jefferson Awards, Susan Taller. Thank you all. Our goal was to engage 5 million youth in student-led service activities over the next five years. This year, we nationally engaged 1 million young Americans, competing and entering over 5,000 service projects. Out of the 5,000, there were 27 chosen as national finalists. One of them was from the city of Orlando. In our first year here, we were able to capture 28 service projects submitted by folks in the city of Orlando. These projects engaged over 12,000 volunteers, contributed over 338,000 hours of service, impacted over 50,000 lives, and had a financial impact to the city of Orlando of over six point, I'm sorry, $7.6 million. And now we'd like to call up the recipients who participated this year.
Mayor, would you join us, please, to present the certificates? As you come forward to receive your certificate, please stay in place for the photograph. Thank you.
The first project is called Clean the World Soapy Saturday. Any participants, please come forward.
We were expecting them.
Dedicated Ducks Against Hunger. Valentines for Teachers. Green Up Boone. Sweets for Spring Break. Student-Faculty Basketball Game. Blood Drive. The Shirt Off Your Back. Teams for Jeans. Pasta for Pennies. And all of these projects came from Boone High School. And then one of the mayor's top three projects, Team Supra. And one of the top 27 national projects that was chosen by the Jefferson Awards and was in our social media campaign at the end to choose the final winners, here to be recognized with a Jefferson Awards Gold Medalion is the Englewood Girls Club and $100 check for their win.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I am pleased to stand before you today to tell you about the Recreation Division's newest opportunity to advance arts and education to two of our community centers. We originally were scheduled to do one, but thanks to Commissioner Ortiz, we'll be presenting on two community centers today. A Gift of Music is a nationally recognized award-winning music educational program of a gift for teaching. Most of their string music education programs are held at Title I elementary schools. We have the extraordinary opportunity to expand their violin instruction program to 30 elementary and middle school age children at the John H. Jackson Community Center and up to 40 children in grades three to five at Englewood Neighborhood Center during the school hour starting October 7th and continuing throughout the 2014-2015 school year. This program would not be possible without the generous support from three funders: the Winifred Johnson Clive Foundation, the International House of Blues Foundation, and Commissioner Tony Ortiz. At this time, I would like to introduce Mr. Eric Smith, Director of Gift for Music, to tell you more about the string education program. Eric?
Thank you Rodney, thank you Mayor and Commissioners, and a special thank you to Commissioner Ortiz, the Winifred Johnson Clive Foundation, and the International House of Blues Foundation, who is making this after-school music program possible with A Gift for Music. Quick story, about a week ago, I went to one of A Gift for Music's orchestra rehearsals, and I brought my violin with me and I was helping some of the students myself, and one of our parents came up to me with tears in her eyes, so I went off to a side room with her, and she told me that she recently had a car breakdown and that she wasn't able to afford her electric bill this month. And so, we helped, after a couple phone calls, we helped make it happen for her, we got the electric bill paid, and while we were sitting in that room together, she shared with me that she and her son, who's now in high school, have gone through so many different challenges together. And he's in high school, he started the program in third grade, but the one thing that remained with him throughout his life so far was music education and his instrument. And I want to thank all of these people who have helped make this after-school program possible this year, because we're just dreaming of how many lives we'll be able to impact through music education twice a week at these two centers. Thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to introduce Ms. Jennifer Thielhelm and the rest of our Gift for Music gang who's here. I think we also have an instructor who is able to make it too. Thank you so much.
I'm from the Winifred Johnson Clive Foundation, and we're just happy to be part of making all this possible. There's nothing more special than changing the life of a child.
Thank you. Mayor, if we could have Commissioner Ortiz, Commissioner Hill, if you could come forward and take pictures, and Lisa Early, if you would come down, please.
Okay, Tyler, you want to come down and introduce our After-School All-Star Robotic Champions?
Before we do our presentation, Lisa asked me to make a quick announcement about some fantastic news that we found out earlier. We found out earlier that we were officially awarded a Florida Department of Education So we are thrilled and extremely excited, and that will go to all of our city's school-based after-school and summer programs, and we think this just kind of further validates the work that After-School All-Stars and the Family Parks and Recreation Department is doing as a whole on a daily basis here in the city. So enough of that, we'll get on to our other work. We'll talk more about that in our meetings and details on that. So today, we celebrate an amazing accomplishment by a group of extraordinary After-School All-Star students from Carver Middle School. This summer, our robotics team from Carver was invited to participate in the NASA MIT Zero Robotics National Competition. Over 80 teams from across the country take part in this summer contest annually. Student teams write and design a computer code that controls a small sphere-shaped satellite that compete against each other in various challenges. The teams battle it out in first in a virtual space designed by MIT to determine the regional winners. Those winners are then move on to the finals held at Kennedy Space Center, and in the finals, the teams' codes are actually uploaded to actual satellites on the International Space Station. And the students get a chance to interact live, via live feed, with two astronauts on the space station, and they get to watch their satellite launch into real zero gravity. Well, I am very, very proud to say that our Carver Middle School team won first place in the Florida Region Championship. And not only did they win, but they went undefeated and beat over a dozen teams from six other Florida school districts. And when I say they won, they mercy ruled every single ass. The team then advanced all the way to the International Space Station finals and came within two points of winning the entire competition. So, oh, don't feel bad for them, it was fantastic. They had a great, they had a great time. So what makes this a truly great accomplishment is that Carver was the only Title I middle school, or Title I school, in the entire country participating. The vast majority of the other schools were private academies or science charters, and our team also had the highest percentage of minority and female participants among any other team in the country. And while this truly was a team effort, there was one person that we definitely need to recognize for making this happen, the squad's coach and mentor, Ms. Shawna Tullock. This past year, Shawna was a part of the first class of the city's OPAS AmeriCorps program. She actually took a year off of Brown University where she is a neuroscience major. Shawna spent the school year tutoring and mentoring this group of students in science and math. She also taught a computer coding class in our after-school program, which eventually led to the creation of this robotics team. She is extremely humble, and I know she will never take credit for herself, so she kind of hates this, but please know that none of this would be possible without her. Shawna, thank you for dedicating a year of service to our city, and more importantly, for inspiring our students to literally soar with the stars. See, I told you it was worth it to fly down, Shawna. I'd also like to thank the principal of Carver Middle School, who is here with us today, Dr. Athena Adams, for her support and belief in our program. And thank you to Orange County Public Schools, United Way, and Volunteer Florida for their continued investment in our Carver program, and lastly, thank you to the mayor and city commissioners for their unwavering support and for allowing us a platform to build a true community collaborative program model that produces amazing and inspiring results. Now, today, what we're going to give the students, when they won it, they got a little tiny plaque, and it wasn't the real thing. So they've not, they've never seen their actual trophy and award, so they're actually going to, if the students would come up, come up front for us, we're actually going to give them their trophy. And prior to City Council, Commissioner Ings was gracious enough to award the students with their city service medals, and he also is going to award Shawna with a city service recognition award, and the students as well. So Mayor and Commissioner Ings, if you would. And Dr. Adams, if you would join us. Dr. Adams, and Lisa, have you joined us too as well? Commissioner asked me to read these. So, from Commissioner Sam Ings, Distinguished Service Award presented to Coach Shawna Tullock in recognition of your outstanding contribution, support, and community leadership to the Carver Middle School ASAS Robotics Team. And then, a distinguished educational achievement team award presented to Carver Middle School ASAS Robotics Team in recognition of your outstanding performance and participation in the MIT NASA Zero Robotics National Competition. breast cancer survivor, to introduce Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Pink October is upon us once again. This is the month in which we recognize both the disease and the advances that have been made to diagnose, treat, and support those who are afflicted with it. As some of our audience may know, I was diagnosed with two breast cancer tumors in the summer of 2009. After a double mastectomy and chemotherapy along with hormone therapy, I'm happy to say that the disease appears to be in remission, and my chances of survival are high. And I'm happy to announce that in fact, this Sunday, October 5th, 2014, I will celebrate five years of cancer-free status, a very important milestone I am recognizing by the fifth pink ribbon charm I added to my survivor's necklace for this meeting. I was fortunate, my cancer was discovered through a routine mammogram and other diagnostic imaging procedures. My hope is that every woman in Central Florida who is a candidate for breast cancer screening will take the necessary steps to get that screening. One in eight women, I'm going to repeat that, one in eight women will deal with breast cancer in their lifetime. Let's kick these odds by discovering this disease early and get every affected woman the treatment and support they need. Some feel that there's too much made about breast cancer awareness, but I've been told that October is a very busy month in hospitals that treat breast cancer. This is because so many mammograms are done and tumors are discovered in October due to the Pink October events and the attention and awareness that is generated. So for me, there can't be too much Pink October if it promotes early So for me, there can't be too much Pink October if it promotes early diagnosis and treatment. With that, I'll call on the mayor to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Rebecca. City of Orlando proclamation, whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second leading cause of death among women in the United States. And whereas each year is estimated that more than 220,000 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer and more than 40,000 will die as a result of the disease. And whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness about the disease. And whereas during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to support breast cancer research and to educate all citizens about its risk factors, detection, and treatment. And whereas we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we also support those courageously fighting breast cancer and honor the lives lost to the disease. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in our community to prevent breast cancer deaths through increased education and regular screening, now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of Orlando, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Orlando.
Okay, and our last presentation relating to the Central Florida Recovery Run-Walk, I'm going to call on Commissioner Ings to do the intro.
Thank you, Mayor. On Saturday, September 20th, 2014, the Multicultural Addictions Network in partnership with the Orange County Drug Free Coalition hosted its ninth annual Central Florida Recovery Run-Walk at Barnett Park. And I like to say that was a rainy day to start that event early that morning, but there were over 300 participants in that event. And of those 300 participants, several of them came from Brevard County to attend this event. This particular event is an event that Dr. John Robertson has started really in the city of Orlando, specifically at the Smith Center. He's also been to the Beard Hall Center, so he's been throughout the Orlando and Orange County area. Although there are many issues surrounding alcohol and drug addiction, treatment and recovery is possible. All people with addiction deserve to find treatment and recovery services. I would like to introduce Dr. John Robertson, Executive Director, Multicultural Addictions Network Incorporated, and Carol Burkett, Director of Orange County Coalition for Drug Free Community. Dr. Robertson and Ms. Burkett have advocated the importance of treatment and recovery. They have worked tirelessly to bring forth the message that there is hope as addiction is a terrible and treatable illness, that the, that there are services available for our citizens. So Dr. Robertson and Ms. Burkett, thank you, and we look forward to a brief overview.
Thank you, Commissioner Ings. And thank you for recognizing what at times has been a lonely battle in building awareness and educating our community to the, to issues with alcohol and drug addiction. Our walk and run actually had 430 participants who came out on that very rainy Saturday morning. And this is the ninth year for us as the Multicultural Addictions Network in performing the walk and run. And this is the 13th year for the Orange County Drug Free Coalition in also hosting the event. When, there are two things I'd like to stress. One is that our effort is truly multicultural. We span the entire community. And it is also a coalition with the, with the Drug Free Coalition. And I would just like to have Ms. Burkett say a few words, and I have a couple things, and we'll be brief.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you so much for recognizing the Run-Walk National Alcohol Addiction Recovery Month. This is actually the 25th anniversary as a nation that we're celebrating this. So I appreciate what you're doing. It gives us the recognition that prevention, treatment works. It also applauds the hard work of our treatment providers like Dr. Robertson, Dr. Flagler, the great work that they do in the community. And I just appreciate the opportunity to work with him. We partnered up many years ago and it has been a successful partnership in blending our walk and run events to something that is much more successful than I realized. So I'd like to thank Dr. Robertson for his leadership and for your all's recognition today.
Thank you.
The thing that I want to emphasize is that our efforts are entirely volunteer from the individuals who place the, the water at the water stations all the way to the individuals who traffic direct. And as part of that volunteer effort, I want to point out that addictions can affect any one of us. I've often said, if but for the grace of God, there go you or I. And as an example of this, one of my individual volunteers who now is a colleague is a native daughter of Orlando and who has self-disclosed her own struggle against addictions, which was a hefty struggle. But we wanted to let you know that that struggle can be won. And the individual who I'm going to have step forward now is Dr. Marcia Flagler, who is an individual who has gone through recovery, who has successfully recovered, and who now has been for several years in the process of treating other individuals in recovery. Dr. Flagler?
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to first thank the mayor as well as commissioners. And I want to also just congratulate and again say how very much I enjoyed seeing all of the different awards today and the projects that are going on throughout our community. And, and my encouragement comes today to all of us, that we do not give up hope, that we support recovery. I'm one of those that like to let individuals know that addiction is not tailor-made. There isn't a certain type of person, family, origin, from culture to any type of lifestyle that says they're the only ones that can be impacted. I came from a very, very prominent family who was very active. I've been very successful in my life, having been an athlete, student athlete, to do well in college, get drafted for professional sports, and go on to do a lot of productive things. However, I fell victim to just some of the peer pressure and some other things. However, the, the big message that's greater than all of that is that recovery is possible, that by the grace of God, because of treatment and because of different projects like we do and getting information out to help individuals become empowered, to, to let families know that you are not alone, to let our communities know, do not give up hope, do not give up on individuals. Let's work to get more and more of the information out because today, I stand before you as a result of recovery and the process that I've had, August 5th, 1991, is the last time that I ever used any mood mind-altering substances. So I just celebrated 23 years on August the 5th of this year. And it is a family disease and what I do, and I'm real grateful for the opportunity to give back in my communities. I have a master's in mental health and, and I have a doctorate in philosophy of addiction studies, and that's only because of recovery. Because had I not gotten that, I would probably be dead by now for sure. So I just thank everyone for, for your support and encourage more and more efforts and getting the word out. And please, families, do not give up on your loved ones. Communities, do not give up on the families that are in our communities. Please, let's continue to promote that recovery is possible. If nothing else, I stand before you as a living example. Thank you so very much.
Mayor, Mayor, before you read the proclamation, I would like to say that Dr. Flagler is the daughter of Commissioner Mabel Butler. So let's give her a hand.
I told Carol that I would behave today, but one thing I have to say, there is some legislation that is coming up around medical marijuana. And I would just ask all of you, as you consider how you as individuals are going to vote or as you talk to your constituents, please read the law carefully. There is a lot that is not in it that we need to be careful about before going ahead and, and just voting willy-nilly on it. I will share with the commissioners a small position paper and will hopefully have you further consider it. Thank you.
Proclamation, whereas the Multicultural Addictions Network, Inc., or MCAN, in partnership with the Orange County Drug Free Coalition is proud to join with hundreds of organizations across the country in celebrating National Alcohol and Drug Recovery Month. And whereas MCAN is participating in this national recognition of the power and importance of treatment and recovery from alcohol and substance abuse by gathering concerned citizens from all over central Florida for a Recovery Run-Walk called Step in the Name of Love. And whereas the Run-Walk is designed to emphasize that many individuals, families, and communities have been severely impacted by the ravages of alcohol and drug addiction. And whereas such dedication and professionalism as that on behalf of the men and women of the Multicultural Addictions Network, Inc., who have provided hope for our local citizens who are battling the terrible disease of alcoholism and addictions, is truly honorable and a worthy recognition. Now therefore, we, Mayor Buddy Dyer and Samuel B. Ings, Orlando City Commissioner, District Six, hereby do proclaim Monday, September 29th, 2014, as the ninth annual Central Florida Recovery Run-Walk Step in the Name of Love Day in the city of Orlando.
And if there are any Drug Free Coalition volunteers or MCAN volunteers, please come If you are here only for the awards and presentations and were wondering, when is a good time to go? Now is that time? Okay, plenty of seats up front for anybody that was left standing. Let's move into the mayor's update. I just have a couple of things. Our Digital Main Street, the Orlando Tech Association, is hosting Orlando's first-ever Tech Week this week, which is expected to bring thousands of attendees to downtown Orlando. The week includes 10 technology and art-related events hosted over seven days to showcase Orlando's startup and tech scene, which is now thriving in our urban core. If you will visit, visit orlandotech.org, you can get information on all of the events and activities. And I've got some great news to share. The city of Orlando has been selected by the Orlando Business Journal of one of Central Florida's 2014 Healthiest Employers for our innovation in leadership and wellness programs, and that's a testament to the city's commitment to the health of our employees. Last week, we had a Men's Wellness Day that was oversubscribed and had some great information about everything healthy. And the women's event was several months ago and likewise had more participants than we had spaces. Today, we also renew, well, a couple items on the agenda. We renew our annual Orlando Main Street Program Agreements. Congratulations, Pauline, are you out there somewhere? Where are you, Pauline? Anybody associated with the Main Streets? How about everybody standing up over there? Big weeks for Main Streets. We renew all of your contracts and then tomorrow night, we have our Main Street Awards. All right, see you tomorrow night. And then also on today's agenda is an application for grant funding that'll help us continue our hands-only CPR training through the Orlando Fire Department. And I'm happy to report that we have already trained 15,000 residents in the city of Orlando in hands-only CPR. Okay, with that, we will move to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is a number of items that are worked, that are voted on through a single vote of council. We give each of our council members an opportunity to comment on separate items and also to quickly update you on important items from their individual commission districts. We rotate the order that we do that, and Commissioner Gray is first up today.
Thank you, Mayor. Given the crowd, let's go right to the agenda. Item under hearings number one, as well as ordinance's second read, both pertaining to the rescission of the DRI on Orlando Corporate Center. I need to declare a conflict and have provided the clerk the necessary paperwork. Also, under the item C8, the minutes of the BZA meeting, I'd like to ask if we could defer just two of those items on the minutes. And it also happens to be item C8, bullet points two and three. Those are requests to the BCA for driveway expansions in my district. And while the BZA board heard those, I want to make sure we explored some medical issues associated with that. So I'm not asking to deny those, I'm asking to defer just those two items if we could.
Okay, if there's no objection, we will defer the two items that Commissioner Gray addressed.
Thank you, that'll give us time to, to study those with staff and then come back next, next meeting.
Okay. And with those- Madam Clerk, you have, which two those were?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gray. We'll move to Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Dyer and Commissioners, last week, we celebrated the Hispanic Heritage Month Kickoff Event here at City Hall. And I would like to thank you, Mayor Dyer, for your support and thank Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Hale, and Commissioner Ings for joining us during the event. Mr. Luis Martinez and Mrs. Alicia Ramirez did an excellent job coordinating and executing this great event, along with Diana Morales and Pina Cabreras. They also organized, they formed a city staff event committee, and the members were Ms. Adolfin Ortiz, Leana Monje, Iris Perez, Miriam Maldonado, Yolanda Bonilla, Karina Rodriguez, Manis Sol, Samuel Ramirez, Alicia's husband, Nathan Morales. Thank all of you for a great effort. It was a great, great kickoff. Everybody enjoyed it and we all had a great time. I'd like to thank city staff, Mr. Chris Castro and Dr. Brayton Kaye for a very informative presentation about the city greenworks initiative given to our District Two Neighborhood Leaders' Council. During our last meeting this month, we had all kind of great comments coming back and people are really looking forward to the green initiatives. Last Saturday, Mr. Luis Martinez, Director of Multicultural Affairs, received the Puerto Rican Chamber of Rican Chamber of Commerce El Hosco Award in Communications, recognizing his excellent work in that field. I also want to take advantage of the situation, of the occasion, and congratulate those cancer survivors. It's very commendable, and I know it's not a battle of, of the, of the person, the victim per se, but it's also the families. So congratulations to all of you, and our prayers and our commitment continues with all of you, to see if someday we'll find a cure to this terrible disease. Congratulations to all the Main Street and Market Street programs on the renewal of your contracts. And with that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Three, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and let me mention a couple of things in addition. Saturday was National Public Lands Day. I had a chance to go out there, and Commissioner Ings and I had a chance to, to go around the, the entire area, thanks to Jan Ray Hill and John Perone and David Wag and all the rest of the people that we spoke to out there. Got a chance to teach my wife hands-only CPR, so now I feel pretty safe around the house. But it was, we really had a great time. It was probably the best one yet, and I have never seen too many people come out so early, which was great. I think that was because the rains came about 3:00, so that was good news for us. Let me also say just a special recognition and thank you to Father Roger Hamilton. Many of you know Father Hamilton from St. Michael's. What a, what a wonderful, wonderful man. I had a chance to spend some time yesterday at the church for his celebration of his retirement and 16 years of service to St. Michael's and 40 years of service in the ministry. And so I've got the chance to, to say publicly how much I admire and love him. He's just a wonderful, wonderful man. A couple of quick updates. This Saturday is where the fun starts. Golf tournament for the Orlando Recreation Division starts 8:00, I think, maybe 7:30 on Saturday morning, right? One of those two. If you need information about that, you can go to Orlando Rec or contact me. It's over at Dove Street, and we have the classic battle between Bishop Moore and, and Edgewater's crew in golf. We can't beat them in football, but we have beat them in golf every time we've done this. So, so maybe that's, you know, maybe that's a little bit of, of, we, it's a little satisfaction. A couple of things that let me say, congratulations to Main Street, appreciate what y'all have done. I think the impact that you have on our community is, is oftentimes minimized. I will tell you that the work that you do and what happens in small business is probably the core of what we do, and I will tell you how much I appreciate what you have done. And with that, let me mention a couple of quick things coming up. The zombies are coming, is that right? The zombies are coming over to the Audubon Park Garden District. It's this Saturday, 6 to 10. Please come and enjoy that. It's a great chance, and you get a chance to see all the undead that are over there. The, I know, I know, it's, it's, somebody convinced me of doing a zombie attack thing a while back, and, and so we still, the city still has an official plan in case we ever get attacked by zombies, I want y'all to know. But there will be a kid's zone and live music and outdoor movies. I'm really excited about seeing this community come together, and it's your, one of your, your anchor events, and I appreciate that. Also, October 11th is Jazz Fest, is that right? No, wait a second. October's a great time for jazz. Oh, that's in Lee Gardens, oh, I'm sorry, that's Lou Gardens. And then yours is October 25th, right, on College Park? Got it. And that's from 6 to 11 on Edgewater Drive, so please come out with that. And if you, and Andrea, raise your hand. All right, so Andrea is there. So check out collegeparkpartnership.com for all of the other details. And of course, the Edgewater Drive, Edgewater High School Homecoming Parade is October 16th at 6:00, so please plan on attending that. Congratulations to After School All-Stars. Man, that is so cool. And we see a lot of things today that have effect of how we're spending some of that money. A lot of that money comes to us and we have to come through the, through the city. So what you see is some things that are funded not by the city, but funded through a grant. It just comes through us from that standpoint, so I appreciate that. And then last, let me just read my standard statement I do every year. So as you know, I've served for many years as the Executive Director of the Christian Service Center for Central Florida. Today, item A4 is on today's agenda, is the funding agreement for the community service organizations. One of those organizations is the Christian Service Center. They've been funded since 1998. Even though none of these funds go toward the general operations of the center, I'm going to abstain from voting on this item in light of any perceived conflict of interest. I have also filed the Florida Commission on Ethics Form 8B, memorandum of voting conflict for county, municipal, and other local officers with the city clerks. So I'll be abstaining on item I4 today.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District Four, Commissioner Sheen.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer, and I too would like to congratulate Tyler and After School All-Stars. I think that's just amazing. And Shawna Tullock, you have an amazing future ahead of you girls, so I just, I'm glad we gave her a standing ovation. That's the kind of young people and leadership that we really need to recognize in this city and how she's helping other young people. I just think that's just absolutely amazing. We have the Hope Hike for Breast Cancer Survivors. On October 1st, we'll be marching from City Hall to Orlando Health. I'm very pleased to participate in this, in this event, and I will be marching for Officer Karen Long, my police liaison, who is a survivor, who is in, actually in stage four. Karen's very open about this, and she's actually in Germany getting, getting special treatment. And she is my shero, and I'll be marching for Karen and hoping for a cure, because I have to tell you, for someone who is fighting for her life every single day, all she wants to do is take her kids to school and have a normal life and, you know, serve her community. And she's an inspiration to me and everyone she comes in contact with. And, you know, if, if any of us ever think that our lives aren't meaningful and that we just, you know, don't really think about how, what a blessing our lives are, you need to look to someone who really, really would fight, has to fight every single day for every, every brush he takes. So again, there are survivors out there that need our support, our love, financial contributions to end this terrible disease. On the agenda today, on item A4, I'm very pleased to say that, see that we're doing, that we're funding the Pet Alliance for Low Cost Bing and Neutering of Pets. I think that's great, and I think it's perfect for our city to be participating in that. Want to shout out to our Main Street and Market Streets. I think that's a great program. I've been supportive of that since the outset. And Mills 50 Downtown South and Thornton Park, of course, are special to my heart and have done wonderful jobs in, in creating new business and opportunity in their areas. And a little bit off the agenda, I would like to say on ordinance first reading number three, on the 18A permits, I'm delighted that we're protecting the swan eggs, because people have been stealing those, and now we can say it's a felony. So I'm glad that, that, you know, we can make sure that people aren't doing the wrong thing in our park, because our swans are an absolute treasure and belong to everyone, not just folks that want to steal our swan eggs and make a profit from them, because I think that's just an awful thing. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Five, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Monday last, last week, on the 22nd, I had the privilege of having a live hour-long interview with Television Anna Kana. And it is a Haitian broadcast, and I was delighted to be able to tell them all about Paramore, all about District Five, and all the great things that are happening downtown Orlando with all the venues and opportunities and jobs. And to lead on to that, the next date, I'd like to thank President Hitt, also yourself, Mayor, with the vision that you had to, about education here in District Five, and the big announcement with UCF Campus in Valencia coming to the Paramore area. So now we have a K through eight, a, a community college and a university. So education is getting ready to be alive and well in District Five, and I'm certainly excited. From then, I went and was able to meet with the residents of District Five in downtown Orlando high rises, and I'd like to thank OPD Deputy, excuse me, Assistant Deputy Pigman. And he has been with me every step of the way, and I probably did that wrong, tell him I apologize, but he has. I'd like to thank him. He's gone to me with to every forum downtown and also throughout the Paramore area, talking about safety. And I also had a, a community food giveaway there in the Windsor Cove Palms Corridor this weekend, and your officers are to be commended. All of the officers down in the Mercy Drive Corridor, Chief Mina was there and doing some community policing. It was getting to know the residents, getting to know the kids there in the area. And they were there with me from 10:00 all the way to 3:00 that afternoon, even in the rain. So I'd like to thank them and publicly I say thank you. And also, we, we had a great turnout at the last public viewing and outreach of Project DTO at the downtown library, and it was raining again, cats and dogs, but the community came out and had input, and your staff, Mayor, was there and was, was just knowledgeable and answering all the questions that the community had and allowing them to have input. And I think it really went well, and I was glad to be a part of it. And been busy, and I just think the council, as you know, I've served my first 100 days, and this commission has been really good to me and the staff here at City Hall, and I want to say thank you for assisting me on this journey.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to District Six, Commissioner Ings.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to thank you and, and Michael Waldrich, along with your Mayor's Veterans Advisory Council, for the PLW MIA recognition ceremony that you did this past Friday. It was a very moving event, and it was even more moving from Michael Waldrich when he announced the passing of our friend and the community leader, George Jordan. He's a District Six resident. He passed away, and, and this is a gentleman that was the president of the Rathman Club, which is retired, Air Force, Marines, Army, and Navy. They're mostly all black males that do community events, and specifically, they have a scholarship program that they do with Valencia College, and they've been doing this for several years. So this was a great event, a very moving event, and it was good to see our young people also involved in that. And I'd like to report that the I Drive Improvement District Governing Board, I had its meeting on Wednesday, September 24th, at the Orange County Administration Building. Mayor Teresa Jacobs, who's the chair of that, and Orange County Commissioner, District Six, Commissioner Tiffany Moore Russell is a member, as well as myself, and the Executive Director, Luanne Brooks. We approved the budget for this year, this coming year. And then we also recognize that over $800 million in development is going on in the I Drive area, I Drive tourist area. And this is from I Drive North, that's in the city of Orlando, to I Drive South that goes into Orange County. And then also on Thursday, the 25th, Commissioner Ortiz, thank you so much. That was a very moving and great event that you had for the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration at the City Hall Rotunda. And your involvement of the kids and their uniforms, their costumes, and that was just really great, and it was good to be a part of that. Thank you so very much. And also attended the Junior League of Greater Orlando Legislative Reception at the Rosen Shingle Creek this past Friday. The Junior League of Florida had its state conference here in Orlando, and they are women that's all over the United States fighting against global poverty. And many of the members are attorneys, local attorneys here in Orlando area. Orange County Commissioner Tiffany Moore Russell was on hand to be there, as well as Kasimi, City Commissioner Sarah Shaw, myself, and Representative, representing Congressman Dan Webster with Cindy Brown. But this was a great event, and it's good to see so many women involved in trying to eliminate poverty here in our community and specifically globally. And again, Commissioner Robert Stewart, you mentioned about National Lands Day. Thank you, John Dave, for such a great event, and Commissioner Stewart for your support and presence at that event. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioners. Motion to move the consent agenda, last two items.
So moved.
Second. Who moved it? Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheen. On favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries and the consent agenda passes in its entirety. Okay, without objection, we're going to recess the city council meeting and call to order the Neighborhood Improvement District Board of Directors for the purpose of accepting meeting minutes and approving actions of the September 10th Downtown South Neighborhood Improvement District Advisory Council. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Stewart. Discussion on favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. And we will adjourn the Neighborhood Improvement District meeting, reconvene the city council meeting. That brings us to new business hearings. Let's see, one item under new business hearings, we have a resolution of the Orlando City Council that is igniting certain real property within the city of Orlando pursuant to the Orlando Economic Enhancement District Florida Statute 376. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
Move to adopt. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this resolution? Madam Clerk, do you have any cards?
I do not.
And we will close the public hearing. Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. That brings us, oops, let's see. This resolution is pursuant to Florida statute requires two public hearings, one of which must be held after 5:00, unless there's a majority plus one vote, to hold the second hearing at our normal time of 2:00. I would like to entertain a motion that the second public hearing on this resolution be held at our next regularly scheduled council meeting, which is October 20th, 2014, instead of waiting till 5:01 on that same day.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sheen. Discussion on favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the second reading of, or the second hearing of this resolution will be heard at our regularly scheduled 2:00 meeting on October 20th. Now, hearings, an order approving rescission of the Orlando Corporate Center Development, Regional Impact Development Order. Is there a motion to approve that order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Hale. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Madam Clerk, any cards?
No, Mayor.
I'll close the public hearing. Discussion on favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. That brings us to hearings, ordinance's second reading, and let's start with number one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, relating to the Land Development Code, amending section 58.1161 of Orlando City Code relating to work to non-conforming building, structure, or vehicular use area, providing that certain longstanding non-residential buildings may undergo substantial improvement without conforming to certain development standards, providing standards of review, application procedures, definitions, and penalties, providing perseverance, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the PD zoning ordinance for certain property generally located north of Le Vesta Boulevard, south of Paffner Avenue, east of Semarong Boulevard, State Road 436, and west of Narcisse Road, State Road 15, comprised of 521 acres more or less, and within the development commonly known as the Orlando Corporate Center, providing conditions of the PD zoning district providing perseverance and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Okay, the next two items, numbers- Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Okay, the next two items, numbers three and four, are ordinances, number 2014-42 and numbers 2014-47 are a GMP ordinance and a PD zoning ordinance relating to the Princeton at College Park development. And you recall that we had this on first reading at our last meeting, and were not able to conclude the public input on that at first reading, and we continued the item to this meeting. So we need not go out of order. We need to do the, complete the first reading before we take the second reading. So what I'd like to do, if there's no objection, is for now to skip the second reading on these two items, handle the three unrelated ordinances that we have on first reading, and then go back to the tabled hearing that is on our agenda under unfinished business for the first reading of that, of those two ordinances. Is that okay with everybody?
Mayor, I have a procedural question on that, though, because if we deferred the first hearing to this meeting, shouldn't we defer the second hearing to another date?
We're going to do that.
Okay.
After we get through the first. So my intention would be to complete first reading, and then depending on the result of first reading.
Okay, to defer.
To open the second hearing, and then defer that to October 20th. So we'll complete first reading today.
Okay.
And would have a second reading as appropriate on the 20th of October.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's do, Madam Clerk, we're skipping three and four, and we'll do ordinances first reading number one.
This is ordinance 2014-44, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida annexing to the corporate limits of the city certain land generally located north of Le Vesta Boulevard, east of Narcisse Road, south of Elmstone Circle, and west of Lightner Drive, and comprised of 4.091 acres more or less, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate the property as airport support district medium intensity on the city's official future land use maps, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use map, providing for severability, correction of scribners errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that might be heard on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance 2014-45, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida designating certain land generally located north of Le Vesta Boulevard, east of Narcisse Road, south of Elmstone Circle, and west of Lightner Drive, comprised of 4.091 acres of land more or less, as planned development district with the aircraft noise zoning overlay district on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations of the planned development district, providing for severability, correction of scribners errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance 2014-46, an ordinance amending chapter 18A, parks and outdoor public assemblies of the code of the City of Orlando by amending sections 18A.01, 18A.03, and 18A.08 to update names and titles, by amending sections 18A.02 and 18A.06 to update the listing of city parks and their hours, by amending section 18A.09 to revise the listing of prohibited activities in parks, by amending section 18A.10 to provide for an exception to the 18A permitting process if a city council-approved contract has addressed the same issues, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ings, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard on this matter? Discussion among Commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and so the motion carries. All right, we will, we are now on unfinished business from our last council meeting. You remember, at the last meeting, as I said, we were conducting a first reading of ordinances 2014-42 and 47, both relating to the Princeton. We had started the public testimony, but ended up having to table that because we had to statutorily, well, we had a statutory required 5:01 budget hearing. That first reading we heard from 49 people, according to our minutes, had called another 14 who weren't able to remain for the entire meeting, and we still have seven appearance request forms from our last meeting. So what we're going to do is, we're going to hear from the seven folks that had signed up for that last meeting. If there are people here that would like to be heard and participate, we're going to have another public hearing, depending on the outcome of today's hearing, on October 20th. So before you leave or when you come back, simply turn in an appearance request card for the October 20th second reading. And, let's see, the appropriate way is to submit a card to the City Clerk. Okay, so I have number 65 in the request. I don't know whether they have returned or not, but Randall Baker. And Mr. Baker will be followed by Ruth DeVargas.
My name is Randall Baker. I reside at 754 Elwood Avenue on the south side of College Park. I'm also a landscape architect, and I guess my concern is over the architectural style of the building. I moved to College Park about 11 years ago, and after living in Orlando for a year and then moving to several other parts of the state, Miami, Fort Lauderdale, Naples, Jacksonville, I decided I wanted to go back to Orlando, and specifically College Park. I looked at 64 houses in College Park before I found the right one. At that time, College Park had a brand or an identity. Edgewater Drive still had a lot more of its history than what's left today, and in the last 10 years, I've watched it decline, in my opinion. I was at the BZA Required Design Input Meeting, and I didn't feel that true design was addressed. The developer ended up directing it toward selecting window pane colors, and railings, and draperies, and balcony accessories, yet architectural style wasn't addressed. Personally, I don't feel that the current style suits College Park. The developer last, two weeks ago, mentioned that they followed principles of new urbanism. One of the principles of new urbanism is to address and to follow the contextual, existing contextual architecture of the neighborhood, and I believe this turns its back on the existing architecture. In the BZA meeting, the architect was citing styles, and he cited a style, he called it colonial that he was following, but he said it was the, as he drove through College Park, he noticed a odd colonial, and he thought it was okay to change the style and make a cartoon of it. I pointed out that that style is actually called Hollywood Regency, and it's not a cartoon, it's its own style. The building that was produced seemed to be something to me that belonged in Virginia and not on Edgewater Drive. I protested at the meeting with the planning staff, and I said, you know, they're really not talking about architecture, and he's not addressing my concerns. One of my concerns was, how do we judge when we come to this meeting here? How do we judge that community input was accepted and used? And there was no answer to that question. I was invited by planning staff to develop a sketch of what I thought would be appropriate, and I have that. I'd like to cover a few other things before I go to that. As Edgewater Drive and College Park are losing their brand, we're also losing our vibrancy. If you drive up Edgewater today, you'll notice a lot of the businesses are painting their buildings brown and earth tone colors. Mid-century architecture, which is what College Park was founded on, used colors that were more vibrant. It was post-war, it was, used colors and architectural style to change attitudes and to brighten people's lives. Bank of America recently painted their building brown. Publix painted their building earth tones. Publix recognized their mistake and came back and painted their sign white again. Unfortunately, it costs a lot of money to paint the whole building, so we're on their five-year plan. But in five years, we hope that the Publix will go back to its original colors, the white and the green. At the last meeting, Commissioner Sheehan mentioned, we destroy our history, we've lost it, and, you know, at least save a little bit of it. Now, I'm not saying save these houses, but I'm saying address the architectural style, but to start to save some of the architectural history we have on Edgewater Drive. A lot of the residents in the community don't want to do a historic district because they're afraid that it'll regulate the color they paint their house. So the developers cited the new urbanism, and one of the principle of new urbanism they don't follow is to address architectural styles. I'm not against the property. I believe that if this building were designed properly, reskinned, let's just say, with an appropriate style, that it could actually become an icon for a community, help College Park become a destination, help us capture some of the 57 million tourists that come to Orlando every year, help our restaurants thrive, not just survive. So I don't believe it's a problem, I believe it's an opportunity. My previous thought pattern was, how do you solve the problem of the Welsley? And my response to that was, you put a bigger, uglier building beside it. But I think that this building, I'm not against the size, I'm just against the architectural style. I think this building, the design, is a, an abortion of AutoCAD, where architects and landscape architects can copy one project and paste it in 20 seconds, and call it a new name, and collect our fees.
I'm sorry, that's your five minutes.
Oh, no. Can I share my graphic?
Sure.
All right.
I'll try to give people 30-second warnings.
How do I turn it on?
Ed, can you come assist? Make a technology assist.
I usually talk faster than this, but for some reason today, I was a little nervous.
I tell you, if you'll just give it to the clerk, she'll pass it out for you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Baker. Ruth DeVargas, and after Ms. DeVargas, Melissa Terese.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon to everyone. I'm a new resident to College Park, three months, and I bought in College Park for two reasons, my grandchildren, and secondly, I lived in South Florida for 18 years, where the density is incredible, and I chose College Park because the density is less, and it's a lifestyle that I want to enjoy, and I just plead with the council members and the mayor to take it back to the table and make it less dense, for the good of my grandchildren walking to school, and just the lifestyle that is College Park, and I hope you'll reconsider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Melissa Terese, and then Susan Dornor.
Hello. I'm originally from Venezuela, and one of the things that I really wanted to do is, when I buy my first house, to have, you know, location is the main thing you want to think when you buy your house. I think that this project, it's a little bit too big, we have too much traffic. My house is right on the corner on Princeton at the other end, and traffic drives me crazy. It really does. It doesn't go away. The train is there. I mean, it's so loud. So I would like to keep it as it is, because that's the unique thing about College Park. What attracts me is that it's unique, it's kind of quirky, and it's kind of fits me and my family and my dog and my husband, and all my neighbors are very nice, you know? I don't really want more people and more cars and more traffic. It will drive me insane. So maybe think of that, and just think of the people that are actually there and have to listen to all the cars and, you know, go through traffic and spend hours in Edgewater trying to get to A and B, you know? So that's it. I'm against, obviously.
Thank you.
Dornor.
Dornor.
My name is Susan Dornor. I live at 1225 Shady Lane Drive, and thank you for listening to us. I'll try to make this short. When I heard that there was going to be a planned development there, initially, I was very interested, because I thought perhaps it would be something that would have a lot of flexibility in terms of having green space, places that the community can interact with the new renters, as well as new businesses. And I thought it could be something really vibrant. What I was hoping it wouldn't be, would be essentially nothing more than a big box apartment complex with no green space, no connectivity, very little to no retail or commercial. And that's really what makes sort of that new urbanism concept work, and that doesn't appear to be here. More disturbing than that is the fact that the front parcel is not included on this project. It makes it extraordinarily inconsistent. It's almost like saying, the check is in the mail, go spend your money. Well, I'm not sure what that means, because I don't actually have that check, so I don't know what happens on the front part. I heard staff talk about no more than three stories. I have a difficult time believing that unless the intent is not to cut off the view from the Welsley, because you simply would want to have your density on the front. Instead, it's been allowed to be pushed back into the neighborhood. There's no connectivity, there's no park, there's no green space. It's just really very barren. And I don't, I think that a project could work there, but I don't see how this particular one does. And if it were enhanced, it probably wouldn't be as bad. But honestly, to not have that front parcel where you should have your greatest density included on this is disturbing. Sort of under this criteria, you can do anything. There's no real zoning, there's no real balance to keep a project from perhaps being overly beneficial to people who want to develop, and there should be a balance. Their rights are certainly important, but so are the homeowners. People are investing in College Park. All in all, it's doing well, and I would hope that this commission would want to encourage that, and encourage people to come back and reinvest. It helps everyone. I think the message with this project is that the, with all due respect, the Welsley is our standard, and I would ask you to go and stand in front of the Welsley and walk around it. It's a very new project, and it's very dated, and it's seven stories. That's a huge impact, and I see this project as essentially mirroring that one, and I don't see how that's an asset for the community as a whole. Last but not least, on Edgewater Drive, you have a fairly sleepy commercial district. The neighborhood is not sleepy, there's rooftops, and there's income. So the issues that lie there are internal, and I think a lot could be done to rework that. I think you could spend the next 10, 15 years taking each building that's one story to two, two to three, et cetera, and you'd have development for the next 10, 15, 20 years. And it would be dramatic, and it would be a plus for everyone. So I'm hoping that this plan will change in some capacity and will become a little more unified with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is Jose out there? He has a card in. He has a card in. I don't see him.
Got a card in.
Yep, okay. The last two appearance request cards that I have are from Pat Christian and Anthony Everett, representing the ownership group and the developer of the apartment. I see that Jim Kersey is here as well. Either Pat or Jim, would one of you come up and give the perspective? I don't think we've actually had the perspective of the owner of the property and the owner of the buildings out on Edgewater Drive. And Jim, I know you didn't have the benefit of all of the testimony from last week, but I'm sure you've had a lot of input otherwise.
Well, the plan has never been to leave the front building alone. Once, if the project is approved, we intend to, number one, the parking lot, the surface parking lot would be incorporated into their plan, and then the front building would be rescanned to incorporate it architecturally to their plan. As far as redevelopment, it's a long way off, folks. We have leases that run between 10 to 15 years across there, and there's no plan to bother those tenants. CBS, iStudio, all the tenants in there have very long-term leases, so there is no plan to redevelop that anytime soon. And the, the conditions of the approval as currently in place allow no more than 44,000 feet. So someday, if someone wants to redevelop it, you're probably looking at, you know, the present building is 17,000 square feet, so you do the math, that's about a three-story building plus wherever you accommodate the parking behind it. So, so that's what likely is going to happen. But in terms of the near term, which I would suspect will be a 10- or 15-year window, it's going to be tied architecturally to the look of the apartment.
Questions for Jim? Okay, thank you. And then Mr. Everett?
I'm Anthony Everett, 5000 Bay Shore Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, and I'm with Pollock Shores Real Estate Group, who is the developer for this proposed project. You know, when we started this process over a year ago, we started with a vision plan. We tried to work to find what we thought would fit within the College Park community. We wanted to make it walkable, pedestrian-friendly. I think we've done that. You know, we did have at the design charrette, we did listen to Mr. Baker's opinions and his, and I just didn't feel, and none of the other people with the city staff and our architect felt that the type of architecture he was proposing was right for this particular site. I think it is found throughout College Park, and I think that's something that, that, you know, might work in another location. But we're, you know, we're in the middle of trying to coordinate thousands of different opinions and hundreds of different city codes. And, you know, it's basically like creating a three-dimensional puzzle. At the end of the day, you try to make everybody happy. And I think we've done, you know, the best we could to try and come up with a project that, that we thought would meet the code, that would work well with the neighborhood. And, you know, I think that we're trying to mitigate things like traffic. If anybody wants to speak to my traffic engineer, they're here and available. You know, the traffic situation in the area is not really difficult because of this project. It's difficult because of existing conditions. Our, our project actually has very minimal impact on the traffic patterns in the area. And with us being, us being on a transit, on a transit route, and if we are allowed to put in the transit stop, we'll actually have a certain number of our residents using public transit. They will park their cars on the weekends. You know, I, I know that nobody believes this because they're not used to seeing urban development like this, but in these projects, when you have pedestrian-friendly and walkable projects, people actually do park their cars. And high density does work in urban areas. So in any case, I know we've got a lot of opposition here tonight, or today, and I'd just like to offer up, myself, to answer any questions we have. This has been a long, difficult process for everybody. We've tried to be very collaborative, and we ask for your support.
Okay, questions, anybody? All right, thank you. Let's see how to go about this. We have both motions in front of us, so I guess we're going to take these one at a time. Commissioner, any discussion on either of these? Commissioner Sheehan?
Mayor, I have, I have some discussion. I'm a little concerned about some things. And I understand that this is a, you know, in another commissioner's district, and I, and I appreciate the division plan and things that have happened in place to try to avoid this situation. But I do have some, I do have some concerns with this, because I'm afraid that if we, if we approve this one, this might be precedent-setting for other districts. And I am very concerned about building, allowing entitlements for additional residential without building the retail on a mixed-use project. You know, and believe me, people have cast aspersions on many projects in my district, so I'm not totally happy with you all, because we did a very exhaustive process for Soto. We did a very exhaustive process for Mills Park, and nobody spoke against that because for the most part, people were involved in the process, and they were on major thoroughfares and things like that, and they've been successful projects. So I do support infill development, good infill development. That said, I've also had some very controversial developments that have tried to come in, like the 17-story office building in Lake Yola Park that we've had to work with. So I'm no stranger to controversial projects. I do support good infill development. My concern with this is that our code is not addressing the compatibility. This mixed-use project is not providing a benefit, it's not providing additional retail, it's not putting the retail at the, and the most density at the Edgewater Drive on the transect that's supposed to have the density. So that's, that's a concern that I have in terms of reading the plan. And then Edgewater's on a road diet, and now you're increasing the density on the road that's not been on a road diet, so I don't see how that works. Most of the projects that we've done in my district were, or have been on major thoroughfares. So again, I'm not, believe me, I'm not anti-development, because I have had projects built in my district. And I understand this has gone through a process, but I kind of think this has been a little tortured. It's kind of like, they say an elephant is an animal designed by committee, and I think this project has been tortured. And it's been tortured to the point where it's kind of not making sense. And one thing I would say, though, that usually what happens is if a lot of people, as many people that are here today are opposed to a project, they usually appeal it. And that gives us time to kind of work out the details. But this project wasn't appealed, so that kind of puts us at a very, that puts us, the council, at a disadvantage in terms of dealing with this process, because nobody's appealed it. Again, usually the appeal process gives us the time to slow it down, work with it. Again, on the projects that I've worked with that have been controversial in my district, they've all been appealed, and it gives us time to kind of work these situations out. I'm distressed that nobody bothered to file a $250 appeal so that we could have addressed a lot of these concerns through a hearing officer and slowed the process down. So like I say, I think that, that if the, if this had met the plan in terms of transects and heights and things like that, I would be supportive, but I can't support something that doesn't, does not address the actual process, which is to put density in the front of the building and, and come back. So I do have some concerns with this, and that's why I'm doing this. It's not because I'm opposed to infill at all, but after hearing from the residents and the concerns they have about this, I think if you're going to have more density, you should have the benefit of better retail. That's just how it works out. Those are the trade-offs. No, 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 listen, no, seriously. I, I don't, I don't want applause. I, you know, I feel very seriously about this process. I'm not doing this for, I, I don't like, like I say, if I didn't feel this was precedent-setting in terms of how it applies to other districts, I would, I would be supporting the commissioner of the district. And I'm not playing this for applause. I think that we should be looking at good development, because this is something that's going to be there for a long time. And whether you like the Welsley or like other, the other things that have happened in the area, you know, people do have development rights as well. So I've spoken why I'm doing this, but if this was a better project, I'm not saying I wouldn't have supported it. You know, if you're, if you're going to tell, if you're going to say we won't, don't want any density, that's just not a reality, especially what developers have some, you know, if you want to put a, if you want to do something on your own property, you have the right to do that, as long as you do it within our code. So there is a fairness that has to be applied on both sides. But I don't think this goes, you know, like I say, this is just my opinion and having listened and read the plan and looked the plan over. And I'm sorry, Jim, when you came and talked to me about this, I had no idea that you weren't going to redo, be redoing the retail. I, I thought the retail was going to be a part of this. And I misunderstood that, but again, that's what happens when you're trying to do things quickly and, you know, and not go through a process. And I think the process needs to slow down so that we can address these kinds of concerns. And I've been here 14 years, I've never seen a project that had this many people opposed to it. And not, you know, notwithstanding, we shouldn't be just doing something because people are upset about things, but I think we need to kind of look at it and, and try to see what we can do to make this a more appropriate project. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me, thank you for discussing the process, Commissioner Sheehan, and I think frankly, you and I are going to be on the same page when this is all over. I've got a prepared statement, because I want to make sure that I use my words very carefully. But I want to make sure that we start off with this process. Those of you who've heard me speak, I have spoke in advocacy of the Edgewater Drive vision plan, not of this plan. So I'll make sure that we're on task with that. So let me just start with this. I want to say thank you, first of all, those who have come back. Coming to these meetings is important, they mean a lot to all of us, and I appreciate you being here. But while many of you may think this is crazy, the reason why you're here is why I love College Park. It has nothing to do with the buildings. It has nothing to do with the roads, it has nothing to do with the transportation, it has to do with the people. And for that, that's the reason why I am deeply grateful that you're here. This is a difficult decision, there's no doubt about it. As some of you have heard me say, and as I address these issues exactly the same way throughout our entire city, just like Commissioner Sheehan, because I love our city and love all parts of our city. And while I love College Park, and as you all remember, it has been my home for my entire life, so I've only had a chance to see it for 61 years, I face this issue exactly the same as I face other issues throughout the entire city, because it's a city issue, it's not just a neighborhood issue. Our city is committed to some core principles: creating a vibrant activity centers in each of our neighborhoods, reducing urban sprawl, and providing the minimum, the maximum services that our citizens can afford. So in doing that, let me share some history with some of you about the College Park area and the neighborhood, our neighborhood on Edgewater Drive, at least from my perspective. The drive itself has been zoned activity center for more than 30 years. This is an extremely high density that allows both high-density and very tall buildings up to 75 feet. I think that one thing we all need to take into consideration is that we have to look at a property, not by what it is today, but by what the highest use of that property. There has been a concern of other parts of College Park lately, where neighbors are unaware that they live in areas zoned, as they are too, which allows for a building of duplexes. But because duplexes weren't there, they assumed you couldn't build duplexes. In 2005, a project named the Ivy, not to be confused with the Ivy at Winter Park, near Orange Avenue, came forward. This was brought forward by a developer and effectively expanded the mixed-use and commercial use in the College Park south of Harvard and along Edgewater Drive. There was much opposition to the project. The project stalled, and then, then came election time. And after being elected to my first term, I recommended the, a building moratorium along Edgewater Drive until the community could have input into a more comprehensive and long-term vision. This didn't make any of my developer friends very happy, but the word, because nobody likes the word "moratorium." By the end of 2006, there was already another plan in place for the Welsley. By the way, it was on this same front property, located in the front third of the property that's considered today. The plan was approved in 2006 after several residential and community presentations. It included 35,000 feet of office space and 116 units of residential, and it was seven stories tall. By 2008, it was apparent the project was a victim of the economy, and the time was right to look at Edgewater Drive and the surrounding areas, not just through an imminent project lens, but how to study how we can make, marry existing development rights with the fabric of College Park. So I asked the mayor and this council for us to move forward and create an Edgewater Drive Vision Task Force. As you've already heard at our previous meetings, we were laborious to get the maximum input from the community. Eleven members of the task force were appointed by the mayor after we received more than 50 applicants. We selected members of the College Park Neighborhood Association, the College Park Merchants Association, committee, community members at large, providing a wealth of historical knowledge, planning, development, and many other perspectives, all from College Park residents only. Process began with a walkabout that occurred on Saturday, December 1st, 2007. More than 200 residents attended, attended that meeting at Methodist Church and shared their opinions about Edgewater Drive and the College Park area. Following the workshop, the task force held bi-monthly meetings, 18 in total that were open to the public, and many of them were held actually in College Park. We provided community updates regularly and asked for input from general neighborhood through online surveys and response cards. We also reached out personally to every affected property owner in what would be a newly-created overlay district. We eventually provided a report back to the community, along with specific reports to the neighborhood and the commercial properties. Edgewater Drive Vision Plan that we have today was a result of the hard work of those 11 members who committed more than a year of their lives to the community that they love. The plan was presented to the municipal planning board on December of 2008, and eventually approved by city council. And as in this process, the ordinance was written to complement the plan that we refer to as the Edgewater Drive Overlay District. Some of you have called this fluff. This is not fluff. It's not feel-good words on a piece of paper that some have claimed. And while you may not agree with this plan, a great deal of thought has gone in in advance of this. This is a binding document that was created to direct the growth of Edgewater Drive and the surrounding areas. The vision plan itself, along with two, along with the 2,000 Neighborhood Horizon Plans and the plans of the College Park in the 1970s and 1980s and 1990s, were all focused on the commercial and residential density core in College Park. This island was their ground zero. The Edgewater Drive Overlay District, after community input, came to the same conclusion by utilizing transitions, keeping a high density on a very small, six-block core of College Park, which was identified in every plan of the College Park District dating back to 1980s, as our neighborhood urban center. We can make sure that property rights of the owners of the parcels are protected, and there always should be in our country, which allows the city some oversight on how they are to be integrated into the surrounding neighborhood. You can certainly agree that the process was not without error, but you can't argue that we did not have community input throughout this process. That simply is not fair. For months, we asked for and received input, and we have had a plan in effect that has given us the guidance for five years. A plan that simply states, "The task force suggested growth management plan and land development code amendments to proactively encourage development within College Park's core by creating program transitions and other rules that provide for a neighborhood compatibility." Along the same lines, the task force identified possible changes to traffic and pedestrian signalization at Vassar and Edgewater. At this intersection, more than any other creates the bottleneck during peak hours. Within a short time from taking this plan, we studied the intersection, met with stakeholders, and eventually presented five alternatives to address this intersection. As a result of the community's input, we did nothing. We put these plans on hold, hoping to present them again sometime in the future. Maybe now's the time to bring them back out and discuss them one more time. We have a plan we held because people like you said, "No, don't do what we think is logical and appropriate." Six years later, after the plan and the overlay district were approved, we have an assemblage of property on this island and the plan before us. The issues of traffic and pedestrian safety are paramount, and while the developer has provided leadership- provided leadership on these concerns, it is also important that we have a baseline from which to work. I've committed those residents closest to the project, that the city itself will perform traffic studies to know where we are at this intersection and all along Edgewater Drive, just as we did when Walmart came in. Let me be frank, I believe in the Edgewater Drive Vision Plan. I believe the task force members were chosen to steer the vision's ship. I believe in the residents who took time to come out and meet on this project when there wasn't a project at our door. But with that in mind, I believe that the transitions outlined in the project are of utmost importance to the integrity of this plan. It's always been a concern that we are loading too much density toward the eastern part of the property and into the neighborhood, rather than keeping the density closer to the drive, as was the desire of the community visioning process. I believe we can address this massing by asking that the project come into strict compliance with the plan and the overlay district. Therefore, I'd like to make a motion that this council approve the first reading of this project, and instruct the developer to amend the plan or design of this project further, so that it strictly conforms with the transitions described in the overlay district. Prior to the project coming back to council for a second reading or a second hearing, this revision would honor the commitment to the city made to our community, and to give everyone a pattern of development that was predictable all along the drive. So that, Mayor, I would like, unless there's somebody else like them to comment, I'd like to, we need to approve the GMP ordinance first, and I'd like to make an amendment to the PD ordinance that would require that the building heights changes, and I've got that detailed here, I will share that with you specifically. So I think we need to stake those, I think we need to take them separately, is that correct?
Yeah, we need to vote on the two ordinances separately, and your amendment to the ordinance comes, is the PD ordinance, which is 2014-2014-7. So let me get Commissioner Aings, Commissioner Hill's comments, and then I'll see if I can maneuver that procedurally properly.
Yes, Mayor, I just would like a little bit more clarity on the amendment, specifically what are you referring to when you talk about less density, and also to hear from the developer to see whether or not they kind of fit into this as well.
Well, let me give you the specifics in the PD, if you want to, I don't, however you'd like to do it. But here's my, here's the specifics. They require the building heights and mass strictly to conform with the existing land development regulations of the Edgewater Drive Overlay District as adopted in 2009. You saw some of those recommendations from staff when they made the initial presentation last time. So it means that we will mass less of that, less of the project on the T4 or on the third that goes towards the end, so that would be the question of the specifics.
So the T6s actually go down?
Yeah, they go down, right. Right now, it's 5, 4, 3, and what we're doing is we're basically going to go back to the original plan, which is 7, 5, 3. Now, I don't think they need that, but the key is the 3 area, which is the T4, that last third, must stay as a 3, and that will keep that massing down from that standpoint.
Okay.
Now, they have to answer their own questions about whether they can do it or not, but I think the question is, we ought to do what the plan says, and have the developer come in conformance with what we and this council have agreed to as what the plan ought to say. The second is to cap the non-residential intensity to 45,005, 18 square feet. I think that Jim has already admitted that that's probably the maximum he would, they ever need, and that's, he's already agreed to that, and allow an intensity, and do not allow any intensity bonuses to this limit. And then the last probably is to require that all non-residential development be reviewed and approved by our regular master plan procedures. In other words, let's have everything come back to the master plan, and effectively we'll come back to the city council for any approvals in the future. So those are the three specifics that may help you in terms of your definition.
Does that satisfy you, Commissioner Aings?
Yes, it does.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, sir. I was looking for some clarity also on the amendment, and also some clarification. I was informed that the developer was in the process of amending this, is that correct? I didn't hear it today.
Mr. Eber.
We've been looking at ways to try and comply with the transect lines. The problem that we've had all along, and the reason why we didn't come in, you know, adhering to the transect lines from the beginning, was that we couldn't get enough density to make the project economically feasible without encroaching into the transect lines. But if, you know, it's the wish of this council to approve us, subject to us being able to adhere to the transect lines, we'll go back to the drawing boards again and try to, try to do that and, you know, get with city staff before the next reading. But, you know, we lose so many units that, I mean, that's the reason why we came in with the request to have some sort of flexibility with the transect lines, because the plan does allow for flexibility if city staff and council believe it's appropriate. And we thought that by taking the seven-story section down to five stories, it was okay to have a small section that was four stories before we got to the three-story section. And so the encroachment that we have right now into the T4 transect by the five-story section is about 70 feet in one area and 30 feet in another. It varies depending on which elevation you're on. If you're on the Smith Street side, it's only 30 feet. If you're on the, in the middle of the project, it's 70 feet, and then if you're on the Princeton side, it's about 40 feet. But so we tried to balance everything, rather than saying, "Well, here's the line, you've got to adhere to that line." But I can understand how you would come to that. I mean, I see this in other municipalities where people come together and they create a plan. The problem is they don't usually involve a developer in the plan. You know, they use planners, and planners don't always look at the big picture of, you know, how do we make the numbers work, and how does it all come together, you know, at the end of the day? So, but again, we will commit to do our best to try to work with whatever this council decides.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Sheehan?
I had one more concern, and, you know, projects can fail, and it's not our job to make a project economically feasible, it's to make sure it fits in with what our, what our growth management plan is. So I don't, I don't think that's a very compelling argument. But I had a question, and Commissioner Stewart, if I'm, from what I got, the allowed by right uses, 147 residences and 60,000, 63,000 square feet of commercial, they're asking to transfer some of that right to 226 residential, and then cut down the commercial to 44,000 square feet. I mean, my, my heartburn with this is the reduction in commercial when the will was to put the, the density on Edgewater. I'm really having some heartburn with the reduction in retail.
I understand, and let me, let me kind of give a different perspective.
Okay.
Minimum entitlements is 147, 63, maximum titles is 274, 128, 128,000.
Okay.
There have been people who have signed petitions that said that we were putting 226 units on where 26 are, that's simply just not accurate. We're putting, the 26 are zoned, we are putting this unit, portion of this unit is on where 26 currently stand. But the absolute minimum starts at 96, goes to 147, could be 274, and are asking for 226. Now, I will tell you that, and I've shared this publicly and privately, it has been a concern of mine, that the massing of this to move down towards the eastern portion has always been a concern of mine. But, but this isn't our property, and this property is coming to us from a particular plan. I think we have to do is evaluate the property to the plan.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the plan stands strong as to where it is. I think that they are trying to move and modify that to fit into a plan that's adjusted, that's, that's flexible. I don't know that, I don't know that they have done that so far, and, and so when it looks at this, I'd like to say, we put a ton of energy into the plan, let's make the plan work.
Right.
And that's kind of what, that's kind of where I'm looking at. I'm not sure they can, I'm not sure it's financially feasible, but candidly speaking, that's not the city's call. Our call is to look at where we think the community needs to go and see if this supports that portion of it.
Mayor, if I could follow one more question with Commissioner Stewart. Another concern that I have is tying this retail to residential, and then saying there's a 10-to-15-year long lease agreement, so we'll eventually rebuild it, or we eventually, this area will eventually transition, but it's going to do that in 10 or 15 years. I mean, if we accept a long lease term as part of an impediment to redevelopment, but yet count those credits towards a new residential development, again, I'm very concerned about that being precedent-setting, because we have special plans. I have a Mills Avenue vision plan that I worked very hard on. And again, if we allow a developer to say, "Okay, I have these long-term leases, so I'm not going to touch this property, so you're not going to get any benefit from redevelopment, but I can put more units behind," you know, that's a real concern to me in terms of how we approach special planning.
Let me share with you what the staff has told us, and that is, the developer wanted to bring both of these together, that made a little bit of sense, and the idea is that you could not come back later on and say, "Well, we're going to break this up, and by the way, this front third, we'd like to now go to seven stories and put something else there." That was, that was what we're trying to keep from doing, that was the maximum, 274. What I'm trying to do is cap this at 44, 5, that would make sense, that's two or three stories of, of, of commercial. I don't know that you can make a developer to go and do the commercial, I think you can make some incentive to have that happen. And, and the answer is, I'd like to have a better plan, but we are going to limit, I think, limit the idea. Remember, 128, the other choices are maximum 128,000 square feet on this property of commercial, if they come to us in a different perspective. And I do not think that, that this community could absorb that size. I do think it could absorb more square footage on ground floor and two or three stories of, I say, commercial development, commercial condo, commercial, those types of things that create a different environment. But I think our job as city council is to make sure we have those restrictions around that somebody can't come five years from now and go, "Oh, by the way, hey, I'd now like to do 128,000, I'd like to do seven stories." I want those restrictions for the future to keep other future councils from having to do the same thing. But I think you're right, I mean, there's, there is, in an ideal situation, we would see the entire property developed. We don't have that choice in front of us, and that's part of what we would want to, to, to look at. But it's, again, it's not, this is what's coming to us.
Sure.
Let's measure it to what we have in terms of a plan.
And like, and like I say, my concern is this linking without the benefit, and, and I'm not, I'm just not convinced that is good planning. I mean, like I say, I'm, if I had another life to live, I'd probably become a planner because I love this stuff. Dean Grant has ruined my life. I really, I mean, on East Center Fuller Regional Planning Council, I study this stuff, I'm a big nerd, I love it, Jason Burton and I talk about, I mean, I love this stuff. But I'm just feeling a sense of a, I don't want to use a bad word, but this is an extreme extrapolation of the plan, and, and the intended, the intended benefit, which is this stepping down and retail, and because, you know, face it, I've had developers come in, I'll give you an example of Soto. When Soto came in, they wanted a, they wanted a regular target, Cia parking, and four, you know, four anchors, and that was going to be it. And I said, "I don't do super anything, and I don't, I think it's ugly, and I want it to be mixed-use, because we need some apartments, because we had a need for the hospital down there." And actually, it's been a very successful project, because we said, "Look, we're not going to give you density bonuses just based on the fact that you want to make this a commercially viable project, you have to provide that public benefit and actual mixed-use project," which they've done, and I would argue against what some of the folks here said today, that's a very successful project. Might have some, you know, vacancies in it, but the bottom line is, it's better than a Cia, it's better than a Cia parking, and it's, it's a, it's a great project. So again, like I say, that, that's my concern with it, is that we're just not getting to that, to that level of redevelopment. If you're going to tie it together, it should be redevelopment involved, that's all I'm saying.
Well, and Mayor, if you allow me, let me respond. I, I think a good example of the same thing that we're talking about is Wellesley 2. It was on one-third of the property, it was 116 units, it was $40,000, $40,000 square feet, and it sat seven stories on Edgewater Drive. And it exactly was the mixed-use you're asking about doing. And, and when that did not go forward, because of the changes, because of the concerns that were raised by the people in the community, that's why we wanted to come back, and that's why we wanted to add the transect to allow us greater flexibility. Now, look, I, you know, I, as I've said in the past, this is, this project comes to us from a developer. We have to measure it based upon what we think is, is what we have agreed to on this council, and that's a fair way to us look at it. So, I mean, none of us on this council are making any money on this thing, it's just, it's really what, what have we said as a council? We have said that we wanted transect environment, we wanted to provide flexibility, but we did not want to, to mandate, so that somebody, the only way somebody could come in and make money was to be at the maximums, we wanted to give them a lot more flexibility on it. But if you take this property and you take what was originally there, one-third of this property is 116 units plus mixed-use. And then the other two-thirds, if you were to take that based upon what the, what the pop, plan could have been, could easily have been 100 to 150 units on the other two-thirds. That's what this island is kind of designed for. Now, in a sense, I, I think all of us would say, "We'd like everything on Edgewater Drive, guys, and let's create Edgewater Drive as that walkable side," and, but that's not what's coming to us. Can we make this work to match the plan that we have, and then we get a chance to do that? My opinion is, I think if they adjust, this is what my amendment allows, if they adjust their residential to match the plan, then I think that we have, they've done everything we've asked them to do, by tying the two together and by being at the residential level. They just aren't at that level right now. And so if that means they've got to cut out 20 or 25 or 30 or 40 units to be able to match that, I, 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 I mean, Pat and Jim are friends of mine, and the answer is, this is, this is an issue decision, this is not a decision that we're going to allow to be, come between us as a community. The issue is, is can they come to a plan that we've said is okay? Now, sometime in the future, may want to reevaluate the plan, that's okay, I haven't got a problem with that. But we have a framework to accomplish that task, and that's, that's what I'm saying, is come back with a plan. If the answer is they can't come back with it, then fine, maybe the next plan will. If they can come back with it, then fine, we move forward. The issues of, they are providing some public benefit, the public benefit they're providing isn't necessarily mixed-use residential, but they are providing some other pedestrian and mass transit and some other things that they're doing, they're, they're doing everything that we ask them to do, they just aren't quite there yet, that would make me think that, that the heart of what we agreed to in the plan is what we want to move forward on. And that's my point. So I think if they come to that, I think we move forward. If they can't make any money doing that, then that is their choice, not our choice, because the plan is what's the important thing to us. And so I've, I've been saying that all along, and apparently I've been vilified by several in our community for that, and I, and I apologize that people are not listening to me. The plan is the core. The core is what we decided that we would do, that 200 people spent a year looking at this, and now all of a sudden, the whole goal of that plan was to avoid this type of controversy by having that guideline. And then a plan comes to us, it doesn't quite match it, and all of a sudden, that controversy comes back up again. And so, so let's get back to where we were, what's the plan call for? And that's my recommendation, so, I'm sorry, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me that.
Commissioner Aings?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I guess the more we kind of talk about this, the more it kind of gets a little confused, kind of out of its context as far as the amendment is concerned, because I think there needs to be more time, at least from me, to actually support your amendment, and because I'd like to hear what staff has to say concerning it, and also what the developer has to say concerning that. The original ordinance, I can support that, I can support that, but this, I really can't support, and, and, you know, you say if they can come to us with a plan, and I guess that plan is based upon what you're saying now with this amendment, and I'm saying, before I can actually vote on that to support it, that I need to hear what they really have to say. And I know that he's come here and said something.
I understand, if you'll allow me, Mayor, let me make sure, let me, let me give it to a different perspective. The current ordinance they have today is not in compliance with the Edgewater Drive Vision Task Force plan that you voted on. That's, that is fact. So the question is, do we want, as a council, to put, to ask these people to come in compliance with a plan that we already have voted on in this council? Or do you want to vote on something that does not match the current plan that we have voted on? I'm, what I, my amendment just says, guys, we voted on a plan, we voted on a plan 2000... 2009, and it's not in compliance, please bring it into compliance. And when you bring it into compliance, let's talk, let's continue. Now, the primary reason for the compliance difference is the height of the buildings, that's where we're looking at, the standpoint.
And with that, and I'm saying, can we, at the second reading, have all of that hashed out?
Yes, no, the assumption is that this, it goes back to the.
Versus trying to do this amendment now.
Yeah, it comes back, and it may, and because of what they have to do in terms of sharpening their pencils, it may be deferred even then farther down until they can come into compliance with the plan, that's the key. At least, that's, that's where I'm leading on this. We could pass it today if you want to, but my point is, we pass it with these amendments, therefore, when it comes back in second reading, they have to apply to, they have to address these issues that we've identified, which is come into compliance with the plan, limit the capacity, and not allow any more additional intensity bonuses, and then require that everything else in the future come through the master plan process so that any changes years from now will still have to come to this city council for changes and corrections.
Yeah, I'm not advocating for anybody, but, but what I'm, what I'm concerned about is us actually going forward and then requiring them to do something, when we really haven't given them an opportunity to study it. And I think the issue that you're putting on the table is clear from that perspective, let's give them an opportunity to kind of work through it, and then at our second reading, if they don't have some adjustment to the plan, then we can adjust that in second reading.
Exactly, that's exactly what this says. This says, come into compliance with it now in the second reading. When you bring it back to us, let's be in compliance to the plan, and if you are, then let's move forward. Or if they can't come back and they bring something back to us, then we have the same choice of, of making those same corrections at that time.
Can we get something from Dean on this to kind of give me a little help with this?
Probably Dean or Kyle, I guess Kyle is the one who's looking at it.
Kyle. I think Commissioner Ains, either way, we're going to be back here on second reading with either a different plan that complies exactly with the 2009 plan, or the developer's going to come back and say, I can't comply with the 2009 plan, so it needs to be up or down on my original plan, something along those lines.
Exactly.
But I think, I think Commissioner Stewart's approach is the right approach, and I live in College Park, too, I share a lot of the concerns that have been expressed over the course of these two meetings. On the other side of that, though, we have to be mindful that this council and this region has been preaching smart growth and transit and Sun Rail, and we don't need to be developing the hinterlands 20 years from the urban core. So we are going to have urban infill, and we've been talking about urban infill constantly for the last decade. So when urban infill comes, we want to make sure that it is compliant with the rules and the ordinances and the vision plans and everything else that we've laid out. And I commend Commissioner Stewart for having led the process to create a vision plan, because it is so much better when you create it in the vacuum of not having a specific project that you're dealing with, but thinking about what is good for Edgewater Drive, what is good for College Park over the next couple of decades, and we need to be mindful that that vision plan really protects the vast majority of Edgewater Drive, north and south of the six blocks, that are dead center on Princeton and Smith, and allows for more intense develop, well, directs more intense development to those six blocks. And if you look at the ownership of those blocks, it is not likely that any of the other four in that area, unless Publix is going to decide they're going to develop multifamily in the front parking lot on Publix, any of those others are actually going to be developed in a high intense, or a higher intensity matter. And one of the things that I've always felt is important for a city government or any government, is for the people that are dealing with that government to have some certainty. If I comply with a vision plan that was created by this city council in 2009, then I can invest all my money in developing these plans, or aggregating property to do a development, and I know how the city is going to treat me when I come there, because I've complied with the rules that they have laid out. And I think what Commissioner Stewart is saying, and whether you, you did vote for the vision plan back in the day, so.
Right, right.
I voted for the vision plan back in the day, too. And what Commissioner Stewart is saying, okay, we adopted this plan in 2009, if these, this developer can come in and comply exactly with the vision plan that we laid out in 2009, then we ought to let him develop in that fashion, correct?
Right, and if he can't, I mean, and that's part of the challenge, is he's asking for exception.
Yeah.
So let's, I'm, I'm not sure that, that this council prepared to provide those exceptions, and, and those are other issues that we'll have to address. So I start with, where are we in the plan? And I think, Mayor, that's probably a good summary, is that we, we've done a lot of work to say what's the case is. I, I will tell you that there are, there are communities, our cities, and our community where you don't, developers are shying away, which is maybe the, the will of the community, but developers are shying away in such a way that they don't know what to expect. And so, so our city has been consistent, and with 250,000 members and a variety of these, I'd say, many urban cores that we have, I think we've done a good job. I mean, Commissioner Sheen, I take a little bit concerned with what you said, is that we actually did a whole lot of work on the Edgewater Drive Vision Task Force and the plan that we have, much like with Mills and with Soto. It's just that this plan doesn't come into technical compliance with what we have, that's the difference. If this came in, we all say, thank you very much, we appreciate your concerns, but it matches what we said, let's move on. It just doesn't, and so until it does, I'm not sure I can support it, but at the same time, I want the process to move forward in such a way to give the developer ample opportunity to do that. I do feel a little bit like Commissioner Sheen, is that when nobody appeals, I mean, these are, these are issues that are often addressed during an appeal, and it goes away from us, and there's this objective discussion of that. Not having that option here, it just continues to move forward. And, and so it puts us in a little bit of a, of a concern, so that's what I'm saying, slow it down, get, come into compliance. And then, you know, if, if they can't do it in two weeks and come back, then that's fine. They've, they've looked at, I can tell you from the emails that I've seen, they have continued to start looking at it about a week ago, they are looking at different options and seeing about how to come into compliance, they need more time to determine that. And I think in this first reading, it's appropriate to move to second reading. If we're going to try to approve, kind of hint to the future, if we're going to try to approve the second reading today, I would say nutso, let's not do that. It's, the second reading needs to move back, we, let's give them time, it's three weeks away. If they can't come back then, then maybe they need another couple of weeks. We've done that before here, where plans have come and we moved them back to, to make sure the staff and, and developer are working on it. So that's kind of what my recommendation is, and, Mayor, I'm, I don't know if you, if I want to.
Can I, can I hear something from Kyle?
Yeah, sure. Kyle, you got something to enlighten us with?
Can you, remind me what the question is, first of all, Commissioner Ains. Kyle Shepard, Assistant City Attorney. There's three weeks until the next council meeting, and just like any time, you propose an amendment to an ordinance on first reading, staff will go back and will take that amendment that you proposed with those three different conditions, and will draft language to the PD ordinance. Keep in mind, this is an amendment to the PD, not to the comprehensive plan ordinance, you have two ordinances before you ought to take two different votes on both of those. We'll craft that language, we'll share that language with anybody that wants to see it, including the developer. The developer will spend the next few weeks trying to determine whether or not they can come into compliance with the transect plan. If they can, then we should bring back an ordinance that hopefully you all will be satisfied with as amended. If they can't, they will be here in three weeks to tell you that they can't, and they will propose a further amendment, and you can consider that at second reading.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sheen.
Mayor, I had a procedural question for Kyle, too. I mean, this is the first reading, and if it substantially changed through second reading, would that necessitate a second reading because we substantially changed the plan? I mean, this isn't like adding some wording to, sometimes we will, you know, we'll amend some ordinance language and stuff like that, but if this substantially changes the plan, is that okay for us to only read it one more time?
It's okay. These changes that Commissioner Stewart has proposed are not, are not substantial enough that you would need to have a second first reading.
Okay.
Okay, and the reason is, is that you all.
And I think the public is acutely aware of this issue.
Whenever you have a, a change between first and second reading, if you do anything to the ordinance that makes the title of the ordinance inaccurate, then it becomes a substantial change, or if you do something to the ordinance that grows the, the, the number of people that are adversely affected parties or potentially affected parties, then you have to go back to do a new first reading. But nothing that is proposed here is substantial enough to require another first reading.
Okay, then we're on, we have motions last week that has ordinance number 201442 and 201447 before us, and we, for the purpose of taking public testimony, opened the public hearing on both of those, but we need to take separate votes on 2044, 201442 and 201447. 201442 is the GMP ordinance, motion and a second. All, further discussion, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right.
No. I'm a no.
Okay, motion carries 5-2. Now, we're on ordinance 2014 dash 2047, which is the zoning ordinance. Commissioner Stewart's motion is appropriate here.
I'd like to recommend the following three amendments. Number one, that we require the building heights and mass strictly confirm, conform with the existing land development regulations of the Edgewater Drive Overlay District as adopted in 2009. Number two, that we cap the non-residential intensity to 44,518 square feet, and not allow an intensity bonus to this limit. And number three, require that all non-residential development be reviewed and approved by our regular master plan procedures.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gray. Commissioner Ortiz on the motion, or on the main ordinance?
The main ordinance.
How about if we dispose of the motion first, then?
That's fine.
Okay, further discussion on the motion, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
So the motion carries 6-1. Now, we're back on the PD zoning ordinance as amended. Commissioner Ortiz.
Mayor, and our audience, I have a, I'm trying to analyze this situation here, because it seems like we have such a huge disconnect between the developers, the community, and even ourselves here. And, and somehow, I think we have to go back and figure out exactly what the community is asking for, what exactly is what is being proposed from the, from the developing standpoint, and where we stand in between, and explain to the community how we can all come together and also to the developer. I mean, I think we still have a lot of work to do around here, and, and I, I'm even confused about voting here. I probably voted for the right thing, because I'm, it's a little mixed up, and I'm trying to understand as much, and I'm not, I'm not the expert on this particular matter, that's why we have such a wonderful staff. But I, it seems to me, in talking very basically, that we still have a lot of confusion in terms of, the community are still confused about what the plan, let me see if I can read this, it's vision plan adopted in 2009, to see if that conforms to what they want. And also, on the other hand, I'm looking at the developers, because I think the intentions of the developers are good intentions, so I wonder if, if the communication between the developer and the community are there, I think we can still do something else to bring that together. So there's not such a great disconnect, and I, I feel very uncomfortable with this voting today, that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Stewart, close.
Yeah, let me, um, let me kind of address that briefly. This, when we started this process in 2006, '07, '08, and '09, the only stakeholders were not the voters, the stakeholders were all the stakeholders. We, we put together the plan that brought constituents that were in the area to come and share, we put together members of the business community, because they pay taxes in this area and they ought to have some involvement in it, we put together some people who are professionals that lived in the area, that had this particular professional, professional work, and we put together some people who had past experience, even on this, our own MPB, who knew kind of how to navigate those waters, and then we kind of backed off of that process. And so, so while, while I believe that, that the community needs to speak, the community is not just the voters, the community is a broader spectrum, and that's what we think, when we said the 2009, that's what we said. We said it's a broader spectrum, let's get them all together, that's why it took 15 months to come back with an answer. So I, I think, Mayor, I'm, I'm in favor of this amendment, motion as amended, I'm in favor of putting the plan back into the stand, into the hands of the, the developer, if he can match that, that's great, if he can't match it, that's great, and maybe the next guy that comes through can, and, and move forward. So with that, I'd like to ask for.
Mayor, may I finish my?
Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, sir. I, I think I understand what you're proposing, but I still believe, that was a few years ago, I believe things have changed, I believe, for the benefit of everybody, I think we should reconnect developer with community and, and have a better consensus, and that's where I stand on that.
All in favor of the motion? All in favor of the motion, which is the ordinance as amended by Commissioner Stewart's amendment indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
So 4-3, it passes. Okay, that brings us back, then, Madam Clerk, if we can go back up to hearings, ordinance is second reading, number three. Let's read that.
Yes, ma'am. This is ordinance 201442, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to designate certain land generally located north of West Princeton Street, east of Edgewater Drive, and south and west of West Smith Street in comprised of 1.97 acres of land, more or less, as community activity center on the city's official future land use maps. Further amending the city's adopted growth management plan to create sub-area policy S 4.7 relating to development on the approximately 3.43 acre block bounded by West Princeton Street, Edgewater Drive, and West Smith Street, providing for amendment of the city's official future land use and sub-area policy maps, providing for severability, correction, scripturner's errors, and an effective date.
So moved?
No, is there a motion to defer that item to the October 20th?
Do you have to open it first and defer it?
Kyle, I think we just need to make the motion to defer.
You can do it either way, but just a motion to defer is fine.
Okay.
All right, motion to defer?
Second.
Motion and a second to defer this item to the October 20th regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council, discussion, hearing done, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries, number four, Madam Clerk.
This is ordinance 201447, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Orlando, Florida, designating certain land generally located north of West Princeton Street, east of Edgewater Drive, and south and west of West Smith Street, comprised of 3.43 acres of land, more or less, as planned development district, with the traditional city, Wakava and Edgewater Drive Special Plan and Appearance Review Zoning Overlay Districts on the city's official zoning maps, providing special land development regulations with the Princeton and College Park Planned Development District, providing for severability, correction, scripturner's errors, and an effective date.
Motion to defer?
Second.
Motion and a second to defer this item to October 20th, discussion, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I believe that is all of the official business, Madam Clerk? Have I missed over anything?
No.
Okay, then that concludes the official business of the Orlando City Council for today.